All right. Good evening, everybody. And I'll call this meeting to order. It is the November 7th meeting of the Olentangie Board of Education. Mr. Jenkinski, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Schreiber?
Here.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda. Right, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
The second wasn't marked as an action item.
A little rusty.
Yeah. It's been, it's been two weeks, you know.
It's like you forget your locker combination.
Movement, was it Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Second was?
Dr. Wallach.
Dr. Wallach.
I got it. Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, for the Board President's Report, first of all, glad to see so many people here. I hear that we have students from the AP Government Class from Berlin High School. So, always excited to have our students with us. And hopefully, we, you know, despite our initial rockiness, we'll put on a good rest of the meeting. Very brief President's Report, I just wanted to note, first of all, obviously, it was Election Day. I heard also from Mr. Meyer that some students worked the polls, which is great. We appreciate you doing that. But it was Election Day this week. While none of us were on the ballot this year, that'll be next year, that Dr. Dabberco and I, you know, are back on our cycle. And we didn't have a levy or anything like that. There were a number of races that certainly impact the district. Representatives Lear and Lorenz were both reelected. We look forward to working with them on matters of importance to the district. There were also a number of school levies from around the area that were on the ballot, some of which passed and some of which did not pass. We understand certainly that it's a very challenging time, you know, in communities as people face rising costs, but these are, these are issues that we're monitoring very closely. And they're things that we are really trying to solicit community feedback on as we're looking about when we might go back on the ballot, given the growth that we're facing in the district. We have a presentation tonight on a survey that we recently did to gauge some community feedback on, on some of the issues that are, that are tied into those. And there'll be continued things as we go along where we're, we're trying to hear a little bit more about that. But just know that it is something that we're monitoring very closely and that we're, you know, we're trying to get our arms around. With that, have we had any committee meetings since our last one? I don't believe so.
We had a facilities committee meeting last night. So, that was a really good meeting in that there were some regular business items, like looking at the capital improvements and just the state of the schools. But we also had a really good presentation from two Liberty High School students who did a really thought-out and, you know, great presentation about updating the district's facilities to include more energy-efficient sources of power, things like solar panels, switching to electric buses, and the feasibility of those types of things. So, it was really impressive. And at the end, I asked, "What class is this for?" And they said, "It's not for a class, it's just a passion project." So, I think that really speaks to how our students are so invested in our community and the future and how they had this initiative to approach Mr. Gordon from, from Operations and approach the Facilities Committee to present their findings and really try to make a difference in their community. So, that was really impressive and they did a really great job.
That's great. Any other updates? All right, good, then we'll move into our first presentation. Mr. Paul Fallon from Fallon Research to speak about our community survey that we recently did.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back before the Olentangie Local School District School Board and community members. For those of you who have not yet met, my name is Paul Fallon with Fallon Research. I'm a public opinion researcher. I work in a variety of different places. I've now worked in 42 different U.S. states, although I'm based here in central Ohio. And I work on a variety of different issues, including land use, which I think provides me a particularly useful perspective as it relates to your situation. Also worked for a lot of public school districts, both in Ohio and other places. With that, I'd like to present the results of a survey that we recently did. I'm going to stand over here, people on mine, so I can point at some things. Let me know if I'm in the right.
Mr. Lester, just a question. Can we, if we have a question on a specific slide, can we stay at that slide?
And just so everyone knows, we're hopefully, for the, the people watching at home, we're cranking the mics up a little bit so that we can pick up Mr. Fallon.
And I will crank up my mic as well. With that, let me jump right in. First and foremost, let me talk about the methods. First and foremost, the opinion research was gathered through SMS text-to-web surveys conducted with 1,223 adult residents within the Olentangie Local School District who had dialed cellular telephone numbers. We sent approximately 41,000 invitations to participate. Secondly, the surveys were completed during the period of October 1st through October 4th in either English or Spanish to give the broadest possible opportunity for people to be involved in the process. And I should mention that this is very recent data. Unlike random sampling surveys, such as those that I normally do for the school district, this is aggregate data that's presented in a raw form, so there's no stratification. When we do random sampling surveys, we sometimes make adjustments such as weighting and post-hoc stratification in order to ensure that the results we get reflect a composite of the district's adult population, but I didn't do this in this case. And I'll talk about the implications in just a second. And lastly, like all surveys, this opinion research is subject to other possible sources of error and not all the results will add up to 100% because of computational calculations.
Just a quick question, if you go back to your previous slide. So, as you go through the results, and you'll probably say this, you're not trying to generalize from that thousand to the 41?
No, this is more like a census than a random sample. And moreover, this is really a reflection of the people who participated, which is telling in and of itself because those 1,223 people who responded presumably have a greater interest in the topic. So, it's important to keep that in mind. I'm not necessarily sure I would advise you to make any generalizations to the broader populations or any specific subgroups thereof.
And a lot of our neighbors might not speak English or Spanish. They would have phone options like to translate on their phone?
Most would, I would imagine. But there may be a coverage error for someone who speaks another language, such as Tagalog, for example.
Sure, thank you.
So, so I guess on that point, so in the past, there were phone surveys.
Yes.
Someone talks on the phone versus a text survey. Have you found the reliance of one versus the other any different?
That's a great question. I actually had a, an issue on the ballot in Martin County, Florida, for a sensitive land sales tax. And it was preceded by a telephone survey that another firm did. And the results that I got doing a text-only survey for them fell within about one percentage point of their results. In fact, I called the race accurately.
Okay.
And the reason that they did the text-only survey is because they could not afford a standard survey. In fact, if we did this type of standard survey with a sample size of 1,223 respondents compared to the 300 we typically do, it'd be about four times as expensive. And frankly, I'm a cheap Irishman, so I wouldn't recommend spending money that way.
But is the response rate any different?
Yeah, it is. It is, and again, the bigger implication is that you-
Different which way, though? Do you get more text responses versus phone responses?
Well, it's the people who are responding.
Okay.
And I'll talk more about that here in just a second.
One more, now that you say that about the two different types, do you, you gave one example of where it was real close. Is that typically your experience as a text would line up with the phone, or is it hit or miss?
It's been hit for me, missed for others. So, I'm not sure that the jury's back in on that matter. I think the public opinion research community is still weighing that. Next, let's talk about the responding characteristics. Couple of differences that I think are important. First and foremost, in this text study that we just did, 51% of the respondents were district parents compared to estimates of it actually being 45%. So, you had a 133% representation. Among women, 60% of respondents were women in the text study compared to 52% overall. So, they're represented at 116%. And this is really important. Among 18- to 44-year-olds, 44% of the respondents in the text study were 18- to 44 compared to 40% overall. Seems to be a bit of a delay.
I'll plug it, put it back in.
If you like, or just advance the slide. It's 110%. So, younger respondents were overrepresented in the text study. Among 45- to 64-year-olds, they comprised 37% of the text study compared to 38% overall. Advance it, please. So, they're 97%. And among respondents 65 and older, 19% responded to the text study, although they're about 22% of the adult population for 86%. So, there's some differences between the results and the adult population. One of the first questions we asked is generally speaking, this time, do you say you're satisfied or dissatisfied with the quality of life in Delaware County? As you can see, 71% said they were satisfied. Now, I'm just going to tell you, I do a lot of work in other places. In the last survey I did in the city of Chicago resulted in 36% saying they were satisfied and 56% saying they were dissatisfied. And the only reason I bring that up is that I want you to understand what kind of rare area you're breathing here in this community. People are very happy with the quality of life. Among parents, 73%-
Paul, sorry. But for us, wouldn't it be more relative to think about it, not versus Chicago, but versus the last time we did the survey?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm leading the witness.
73% of parents said they were satisfied. 69% of non-parents were satisfied. When we conducted a random sample survey in 2023, 59% were satisfied. And even that's a pretty, pretty good number, especially given the national environment right now.
Yeah.
Continue, advance it, please. We also asked, generally speaking, in the specific area where you live in Delaware County, do you think the rate of growth in the construction of new housing, such as houses, apartments, and condominiums, is too fast, about the right pace, or too slow? Now, before I talk about the results, I want to explain how I generally interpret this type of scaler data. Anytime the most extreme response option, which in this case is too fast, equals or exceeds the more moderate one, which in this case is right pace, I say to myself, "We've got something important, a critical emotional trigger point." And as you can see, in this case, the extreme response option exceeds the more moderate one by leaps and bounds. 73% say the rate of growth is too fast. And the only reason I bring that up is that people are going to be attuned to the whole issue of housing growth and understand why the school district is looking at opportunities to expand facilities. Among parents, 77% said too fast. Among non-parents, 69% said too fast. 10% difference between men and women at 67% and 77% respectively, but well above the 50% threshold for both groups. Among respondents who've lived in the district less than 10 years, 65% said too fast. Among respondents who've lived in the district 10 years or more but are not lifelong residents, 79%, four out of five, said too fast. By the way, this was the mobile residency group, with 51% of the respondents in the survey characterizing themselves as having lived here 10 years or more but not being lifelong residents.
So, is that a significant difference that you can lean into, or is that, it is what it is?
I'm not sure what you're asking, but that's a high, high number.
So, the term, to me, it says, "If you just moved in, you're happy with development, and if you've been here a while, you're not happy with development." Right? So, everybody likes development until they've been here.
Everyone wants to be the last guy in and shut the door behind them.
Right. We call it the Broadridge mentality. I, I told you I do a lot of housing growth issues. I used to be the Director of Public Opinion Research for the National Association of Home Builders, and that's how I actually cut my teeth in land use development issues. And strangely, how I got involved in school issues as well. But that's a story for another day. In any event, the bottom line here is that that is an exceedingly high number.
But is that difference significant that we can lean on, or is it just not enough people to be sure if that's?
I, I have no problem making the assumption that, that this sentiment is by and large reflective of the general population. I'm almost ironclad in my survey of that. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking more at the difference of people who just moved in as opposed to-
Both above the 50% threshold.
Gotcha.
And as I said, I, I don't typically start to pay attention to numbers like these until this number, the extreme response option, exceeds it. And in this case, it's towering over the more moderate response option. Go ahead and advance it, please. We also asked, generally speaking, do you think that the construction of new housing in the area where you live will be good for the quality of life, bad for the quality of life, or do you think it will have no effect? 18% say it will be good for the quality of life. 54% say it will be bad for the quality of life. 10% said it will have no effect, and 18% were unsure. 57% of parents say it will be bad for the quality of life. 51% of non-parents, it's a very narrow difference and within the same decile. Among those respondents who've lived in the district less than 10 years, 46% said it will be bad for the quality of life. Among those 10-year respondents but not lifelong residents, 60% said it will be bad for the quality of life. And I think that helps reinforce the point that was just made a second ago about that Broadridge mentality and the shift that occurs after people who've lived in the community a few years. Lastly, among those people in the previous question said growth was too fast and attitudinal but not a demographic subgroup, 70% say it will be bad for the quality of life. So, people are wrestling about the rate of growth. Could you advance it again? We also asked, over the next few years, do you think that student enrollment at the Olentangie Local School District will increase, say about the same, or decrease? 94% say it will increase. I don't know why I put this up here, subgroup results, other than to have some symmetry in the slide design. You can assume that by and large, it's a universal sentiment. Simply put, please, thank you. We also asked, would you say that overcrowding in, of the schools in the Olentangie Local School District is currently a very big problem, somewhat of a problem, not much of a problem, not a problem, or are you unsure? 31% overall say it's currently a very big problem. Just gets up to 37% for parents. And I also want to point out, too, that among future parents, just 19% say it's currently a very big problem. But we've been in nomenclature, future parents are people who do not currently have a child enrolled in the school district but expect to within the next five years. They're about 13% of the respondents. 9% difference between men and women at 25% and 34% respectively, but these are still fairly low numbers. We also asked, would you say that within the next five years, overcrowding of schools will be a very big problem, somewhat of a problem, not much of a problem, not a problem, or are you unsure? Now, we're talking about something very different. 51% say it will be a problem in the next five years. And I don't think most of these folks know how long it takes to build a building.
Yeah, since I was trying to reconcile, it's like, where's the tipping point between acknowledging it's a problem and voting that it's a problem?
Well, this is not a voter study, so I'm not sure I can answer that question in this case. But, but I think as you're trying to build a consensus about what to do, I, I think it's important that people recognize that even though their concerns are about turnover crowding may be moderate, I, I think it's important to remind them, and now is the time to act, because clearly, a large portion of them recognize that the next few years hold something different. Among parents, 62% say it will be a very big problem within the next five years. Non-parents, 39%, a substantial disparity. Future parents, 44%. Men and women, once again, we've got that 9% gap, 46% to 54% respectively. Could you go ahead and advance the next slide? Also, we asked, do you agree or disagree that it will be better for the community to build additional buildings and learning spaces rather than trying to meet capacity needs by resorting to using more trailers for classrooms and changing attendance boundaries more frequently? As you can see, 56% agreed with that sentiment, 23% disagreed, and 21% were unsure. I was intrigued by that. As I was training to be an opinion researcher, one of my professors told me something that I'll never forget, and that he's, "It's as important to look at the attitudes or non-attitudes as it is attitudes, because those can be very telling." And this is a vacuum of sorts. And that's a fairly high number, given some of the preceding results we've seen about sentiments about growth.
Do you think that that's also-
I'm sorry.
Do you think that that's also potentially an issue of the size of our district and not being sure about how specifically it will affect their school versus others, right?
It could be.
Because we've got, you know, if we think, you know, if, if we have people that don't see overcrowding right now, think it may be an issue in the future, but aren't really sure, maybe it's not an issue in my school or whatever.
Yeah.
And it, it's hard to predict exactly where that growth will be.
Yeah, it's very possible. Among parents, 65% agree. Among non-parents, 47% agree. It's a pretty substantial difference. 58% of men agree compared to 57% of women, almost equal. Less than 10 years, 63%. 10 years or more but not lifelong, 50% agree. Go ahead and advance it. We also asked, do you think it's possible to meet the school system's future enrollment growth and school capacity needs without constructing additional school buildings? Probably the most important question in the study. 25% said, "Yeah, you can do it." It's kind of a high number. I was surprised, given how attuned people are to growth in the community. And that also makes me think, too, you guys are doing a very good job of adapting. Maybe victims of your own success to some extent. 48% said, "No, it's not possible." And 27%, another high number, were unsure. Among parents, 59% said, "No, it's not possible to meet needs without additional buildings." Among non-parents, a jump ball statistically speaking, 31% said, "Yeah, you can do it." 37% said, "No, it's not possible." And 32% were unsure. Among men, 28% said, "Yes." 47% said, "No, it's not possible." Among women, 23% said, "Yes." 49% said, "No, it's not possible." Among those who said overcrowding is currently a very big problem, which we saw just a slide or two ago, 31%. 60% said, "No, it's not possible." Among those who said overcrowding will be a big problem in five years, 64% said, "No, it's not possible." And these are two attitudinal subgroups, not demographic ones, but it's very telling how consistent sentiments are about this matter. Go ahead and advance it. I also did something a little bit unique, something I don't normally do. I provided what's known as a contingency table, or a cross-tab, if you will, to compare the results of the preceding two questions. For example, among those who agree that it will be better for the community to build additional buildings rather than trying to meet capacity needs by resorting to using more trailers, 6% agree it's possible to meet needs without additional buildings. 72% say, "No, it is not possible." But among those who disagree that it will be better for the community to build buildings rather than trying to meet capacity needs by resorting to using trailers for classrooms and changing attendance boundaries, 70%, 77% say it is possible to meet the needs without So, another fairly consistent sentiment, and I'm not sure that these are people who are naysayers, but perhaps just people who think that you've done such a good job already and maybe they see the building expansion that's already occurred and, and are complacent because they think there is enough capacity. Go ahead and advance. In conclusion, first and foremost, go ahead and advance. First finding, please. Regardless of the means by which it was tested, there is every indication that residents, parents and non-parents alike, are quite satisfied with living in the Olentangie School District. It's good news. That suggests to me that there isn't any underlying problem, which is clouding opinions about things like your facility needs. Next. Receptions about the rate of growth are uniformly high among the very expanded segments of the populations, which indicates residents are attuned to the challenges it creates for the community, including school district enrollment. So, what needs to be done to explain or justify exploration of facility needs? It's probably not something that you need to do at this point in time. It frees you up to have a more higher-order, advanced discussion about how to solve the problems. Next. Interestingly, the data suggests that many residents in the district think the district has weathered growth challenges well, but parents expect it to become more problematic in the near-term future. While non-parents were ambivalent, indicating efforts should continue to be made to include them in communications despite limited interest they may have in the matter. Next. Point to build upon, a narrow majority agree that it will be better to build more buildings. And although there is a sizable disparity between parents and non-parents, the fault line appears to be an attitudinal one, as those who disagree seem to robustly believe that it is possible to meet needs without more buildings. That's that cross-tab we were talking about, that contingency table. Also, a substantial number also are unsure about both, either due to an information deficit among them or perhaps ambivalence about which can be resolved as more public discourse about the matter takes place. Next. Moreover, it may be important to emphasize the amount of time required to erect new buildings, so the public is fully cognizant that a five-year horizon gives the fast-growing community little time to avert problems that could detract from the quality of education that people have come to expect in the Olentangie Local School District. Now, I want to do one last thing. Go ahead and advance the next slide. Out of professional curiosity, I wanted to try and look at what happened in March to make sense of it. So, a couple of statistics for everyone's benefit. There are about 115,000 residents of the district, about 84,000 are voting-age population, about 75,000 are registered to vote, and about 24,000 turned out, turned out to vote in March. So, it's a very small group of people that decided that issue. But it's not just a small group. It was fascinating to me how different it was when we compared groups within the electorate itself. For example, as you can see, among those who turned out to vote, 24% were Democrats, but actually, 15% of your voters in the community are registered Democrats. Go ahead and advance it. So, Democrats were represented at a rate of about 160%. Among Republicans, 51% turned out to vote in March, even though they're just 28%, 182% representation among those groups. So, you can see how lopsided the turnout was as you're trying to make sense of what those results mean. More importantly, 18- to 44-year-olds, 25% turned out to vote, even though 44% are registered. 44% of voters in this community are 18- to 44-years-old, but only 25% of them turned out to vote. Go ahead. 56% representation. Among 45- to 64-year-olds, 45% turned out to vote. Among 45 to 64-year-olds, 45% turned out to vote, even though it's 38% of the electorate, 118% representation. And among respondents, 65 older, or what? Largely not parents. 30% turned out to vote, even though they're only 18% of the electorate, 166%. And the reason I want to point that out is, is you're retrospectively analyzing what happened and trying to make sense of it. Understand that this group is very different from the community at large in some very profound ways. And so, as you're trying to analyze it, keep that in mind, because it may not necessarily reflect the sentiments of the broader community and may be a bit of a, of an anomaly of sorts.
So, then the, go back to that slide. So, we, I don't think, Mr. Meyer, I don't know if we have that slide in our board docs version.
I just came up with it.
Can we get a copy of that?
Sure.
So, the other question is, so does that tell you that independent folks didn't show up?
Well, 25% of the votes that were cast in March were what are known as issue-only voters.
Right. So...
And they're actually, they're actually a majority of the voter registration within this district.
And they under-showed up, or however you say it correctly, like...
Actually, you know, I can't even say that, because that's a high number for issue-only ballots. You know, a good example, I spent part of the year in Florida, and I've got a good friend that, somewhat jokingly or maybe not, tells me that he goes and changes his voter registration about every three months. Now, he can do that, because in Florida, all you have to do is go and down and sign a declaration. But in Ohio, it's different. You only become a registered partisan by voting in an even-year primary at least once in a four-year period. So, the fact that we have people who came out in such large numbers without a partisan affiliation is still high, even though it's, there's a tremendous disparity between the number of issue-only voters and the amount of unaffiliated voters.
And is that a risk of a spring versus fall issue? So, if you're in the spring and it's like a primary, and you're going to pick candidates for the fall, versus if you're in the fall and the primary's been decided, I'm just going to vote for a win. You know what I mean?
It could very well be. One of my old mentors used to always tell me, the electoral world is run by those who show up.
Yeah.
And in March, the people who showed up were Republicans and senior citizens.
But in the last spring, the Democratic ticket at the top was uncontested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the Republicans came out because it was contested.
Yeah.
And...
I think that's the working theory that I have. I think that's amanely plausible.
And going one more step, is there was no issue-only stuff? Was there any issue-only stuff on the ballot?
Yes.
Right, I'm talking besides us, of course.
There were no state issues on the ballot, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I don't think.
Although March seems like years ago. I'm sorry, probably taking more time than I should have.
Last slide was, was the ticket.
I'm going to send out a copy of this.
Please.
Includes this slide, and if anyone's got any subsequent questions, Superintendent Meyer has my contact information, and I'll try to respond as quickly as I can.
But again, Paul, before you're done, so one, thank you, because this is, you've come in here for, I don't know, how long, 10-plus years?
Probably.
Maybe more. It's always good to hear your thoughts and stuff like that. But from the last slide, what I'm trying to gather, it's like, where's our opportunity? It sounds like in the younger voters?
My experience, and again, this is not a voter survey, so I can't speak with authority about it in this district, but my experience has been that younger voters tend to have more benevolent views of public education.
Okay.
Now, how that relates to voting on levies and bond issues, I'm not certain of, but they're closer to the mark in terms of their recent affiliation with public school experiences, and if they went to public school in this community, they're probably satisfied, highly satisfied with the quality of education they got.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's great.
Yeah, I appreciate, we all appreciate it. I think, you know, one thing for the community to keep in mind here is, this is one piece of data, right? Or, I mean, it's several pieces of data, but it's one aspect of it. Some of the things that, you know, there were a lot of caveats that you gave at the outset about, you know, how we ought to receive the data, but we're only looking at certain pieces of this. And what I think is incumbent on us is to make sure that we're exploring those other things as well. It's, for example, it's perfect, you know, it's a good thing to know that, you know, people are generally on board with this idea of we need more buildings, but being on board with the idea of the buildings and being comfortable paying for it versus state funding, and those are two different questions.
That certainly is.
Right? And so, I...
Everyone would love to have a Lamborghini, but as you can see, not everyone's driving one.
That's right. And so, you know, a lot of the work that we've done, and we'll discuss a little bit more of this tonight, is to be very thoughtful around the community's funds in ways that we can relieve some of the burden on the local community. But this information is very helpful as we start to work through it, so.
Glad to be back. Thanks for having me this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, so we will move forward on the agenda. The next thing is our Pupil Services update, so Mr. Hargreaves and team, we look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity for us to share a little bit about, some updates about our Pupil Services Department. Here with us this evening are our assistant directors, Stephanie Dabrico, who oversees and works with our elementary buildings, Eric Gully, works with our English learner programs, Jaclyn Roscoe, works with our preschool, and Molly Vilio, works with our secondary buildings. You know, I've been in this profession for a few years now, and this is definitely one of the best administrative teams that I've been a part of. They work extremely hard every day to facilitate maximum learning for all of our students, so I want to publicly thank them for all the work that they do for our students, staff, and parents. A thank you team. Whoop, I skipped one. There we go. Okay, so, a little bit about our overview tonight. Eric Gully will lead us off with our English learner program, and then followed by Jaclyn Roscoe with our preschool, and then Stephanie Dabrico, Molly Vilio will wrap it up with our K-12 special education program. Feel free, after their few slides that they go over, to ask questions. We'll also offer the opportunity to ask questions at the end. They will each be talking a little bit about some student and staffing department data, some of our current goals and initiatives that we're working on, and share with you some of our achievements in our department. So, with that being said, we'll have Eric Gully lead us off.
Thank you, Marty. Hi, everyone. Happy to be here to provide a quick update for you on our English learner program. As you can see in the graph, it charts the growth over the past four years. What I want to draw your attention to is our current ratio. Olentangie's current ratio is 31 English learners to one EL specialist. As you can see, the state average for a similar district is approximately 56 English learners to one EL specialist, and that's according to the Ohio English Learner Cost Study, which was published in December of 2022. So, we're very successful in providing our English learners with a favorable teacher-to-student ratio, which is a good thing. What's even better is ensuring all of our staff have access to high-quality professional So, we offer three...
Can I get back on that real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Do we have a sense for how much that's continuing to grow? It, like, I mean, obviously, we're seeing growth year over year.
Mm-hmm.
At, to what, to what point? I mean, are you tracking the percentages?
Yeah, our five-year average is 38% per year. You can see that in the numbers, and just to give you an update where we are right now, as of today, you can see last year we ended at 1659. As of today, we are at 1627. But again, we saw that that was going to happen, so we're able to hire, and we're at 52 EL specialists right now.
So, just to put that number in context, if that was just a school district, it'd be one of the biggest, like, top, you know...
100%.
And I bet a lot of us in the room went to school districts that were smaller than just that number.
Just that group, that's right. So, we do have great staff members, but all of our staff members have to have access to high-quality professional development, and we provide that in three tiers or three levels. First is our in-district professional development, which is available to all staff. PSYOP training, which is about a three-month commitment in the summer, and then our TESL endorsement program, which is about a six-to-eight month commitment. So, we're able to provide that for staff members who are interested. For our in-district PD that all staff members have access to, 546 staff members responded positively at a 97% rate to our PD last year. So far this year, we've already done several in-district PDs. We've had 371 responses with a 98% positive feedback rating. Two of our staff members did complete the PSYOP training in '23-'24. Those were our math teachers at Orange High School, one of our buildings that has the highest needs, so those teachers were very committed and proactive in completing that PSYOP training. And then 13 of our teachers earned their TESL endorsement in '23-'24 through our partnership with Otterbine. So, as you can see, when we support a favorable teacher-to-student ratio, combined with high-quality ongoing professional development, we achieve good results. Our English learners in Olentangie achieve English proficiency at a higher percentage than both the state and the closest comparable district on a consistent basis. So, last year, the state average was 12%, a similar school district was 18, and we were at 26%. But our five-year average is actually higher, it's 28%. Additionally, Olentangie's English learners regularly exceed goals in all gap-closing measures on the state report card, as you can see from the stats down there on the bottom right. So, that's what I have about our English learner update, our EL program update.
Can we ask questions before they move on?
Yeah.
So, we got to talk a little bit, what event was that, that we were at?
Oh, was it convocation, or...
Could have been. You were doing a presentation, and you shared with me, and I think State Representative Lorenz at the time, too, about...
Yeah, that's correct.
How much work you do and the impact it makes. And I just wanted to highlight a point. Was I correct in understanding that the equity inclusion folks also support your efforts?
Uh, we're under People's Services, the English learner department, but we work with every department, so we work hand-in-hand with curriculum, communications, everyone, including E&amp;I. Yep. Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jaclyn. My stuff.
Thank you for having us this evening. As Marty said, thank you for having us this evening. As Marty said, my name's Jaclyn Roscoe. I oversee our preschool program. The first slide align with the department is we wanted to share our preschool enrollment as well as our staffing. Our enrollment currently is 687 students. We often refer to ourselves as a special needs preschool. The reason we do that is to educate the community that public school districts are required to provide special education for students who qualify for special needs at the age of three. As you can see...
Can you highlight that one more time?
Yes.
Somebody asked me a couple of weeks ago, and I forget, I asked Mr. Meyer, I think, or somebody, so this isn't something we do, I mean, it's a great thing, but this is a requirement by law to provide this?
Yes, and we answer this question on a weekly basis from our community members when they enroll in the district with a three, four, or five-year-old that they want to enroll in preschool. We are required, a public school district is required to provide special education services to children if they qualify at the age of three. We are not required to provide preschool services to typically developing students. However, as you can see on the slide, we have 350 students in our preschool classrooms, which are among our Olentangie buildings, and we do enroll 303 peer models. They're not in all of our classrooms, they're in our classrooms called integrated, which serve more of our mild to moderate students, and the state actually requires you to have a 50-for-50% ratio of typically developing peers to non. Our students were with more significant needs. We actually do not enroll peer models so that we can keep those class sizes small, really get some positive growth in foundational skills to ideally move them into that least-restricted environment. So, you can see other programming that we offer. If a child is enrolled in a community-based preschool, which Olentangie is very fortunate to have many community-based preschools, we will actually provide our services to them, which saves us space and enrollment in our buildings. So, we partner with our families and our local preschools for that. One number that we wanted to highlight here is the growth of our program. August to May of this year, we will anticipate to grow 130, and that is just our IEP students. We try to enroll all of our peers by the start of the year, but we usually have to do some recruitment throughout the fall. But just our IEP students alone, we will anticipate a growth of 130 students. If you put all those numbers together, our program will be just shy of 800 students at the end of the year. If you ask the same question of Eric as you did of me, just anticipating maybe the question, ultimately, our growth is trending upward, but not consistently. Just recently met with Michelle Blackley in our department about projections, and just really working together as a department to try to project growth. And in special needs preschoolers, that can be very challenging, but we ultimately have a formula that is heavily dependent on the number of students transitioning to kindergarten, and I'll be talking about that on my next slide. Our staff is very large. We're nearing 100 preschool staff, and that's just our teachers and our assistants, not including our related staff, which will be captured in the school age presentation as they're preschool to 12. We're really fortunate, our preschool teachers, while in across the state, a requirement is that preschool teachers are duly licensed in general education and special education. And so, they are not only that classroom teacher that teaches the early learning standards, they also are the intervention specialist delivering the SDI. So, they serve two roles in one, and that captures those pieces. I do have three preschool supervisors, each of them run and manage a core assessment team. That consists of school psychologists, a part-time intervention specialist, as well as speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists, and they're the professionals that are ultimately administering the battery of assessments to determine if students qualify.
How is your staffing? Is this a hard-to-staff area?
That is directly on the next slide. So, program challenges, I'm going to try to focus. As I highlight a challenge, I'm going to actually then jump to the bullet point that kind of talks about our goals this year, to pair those together, ultimately identifying a challenge to turn it into a success. But yes, a challenge of our program is, one, just retaining our preschool staff and just hiring them. I formerly was an elementary principal in the district, and I might have had over 100 people apply for a K3 position. Our preschool intervention specialist positions are definitely just a lower pool of candidates. We are, we work very closely with the HR team as early as January to do recruitment fairs, early hiring. We work very closely with them. Another goal that we set this year was really, once we get those staff members hired, we actually hired seven new teachers this last year. We did open four new classrooms, but we also hired 15 new intervention aides. So, it was a very, very busy hiring season. HR knows me very well. In regards to the program, we're trying to work on new staff supports. We paired with Sue right here. We did intervention aid orientation with the school age, which is the K to 12, and we did two preschool-specific sessions this year to really target the 15 new assistants that we had, as well as long-term subs. We partnered with various departments throughout the district to enhance our new teacher academy, and again, really diving into our ESC employees and what's different about their education and the tools that they have and the resource, the resources throughout the district to explore. The second challenge is why our variance of our preschool numbers can be very heavy. This year, 277 of our preschoolers are either eligible or required to go to kindergarten. Last year, we transitioned 217 students from preschool to kindergarten. That process has already started as well. I work very closely with the school age team, the elementary principals, and just what does that process look like. So, our goal here, after surveying principals last year, and then just the weekly conversations with school age and my team, we identified that really our elementary intervention specialists aren't fully aware of their role in the transition. We've done a great job of educating the administration and the principals and the parents and the preschool staff, but that was really a gap. So, we've already started to identify really quarterly education that I can bring to the school age, and it's been a great partnership. The third challenge that we really have is honestly fostering a sense of community. We're in seven different locations across the district. So, we're in the former central office, which is our Shanahan preschool with 12 classrooms. We're in five of the elementaries, and then we have our unique partnership with the Career Center. So, this is just a challenge... So, this is just a challenge, one for our families. You know, if you go to a community-based preschool and you have these great events that, like donuts with grownups, these can be more challenging when we're not all under one roof. And also, just the visibility that our administrative team can have with our staff continually year after year, that is a negative feedback on our administrative survey from our staff.
The preschool that they go to isn't necessarily the one that's like closest to their house, right? It's not like they automatically would go to the preschool that's connected to the elementary school they would transition to, is that right? I mean, obviously, part of it is that there's not one in every school.
Right. Not every elementary has a preschool, so that is one piece of information. We do kind of have an internal feeder pattern of where our preschools are located and which elementaries feed where. We can't always make that happen because of our programming. For example, Shanahan preschool, because of it being two stories, not having access to bathrooms, maybe not as accessible for some of our students, we do not have our more significant needs there. We don't have our SLCs there. We also don't have the building administration, counselors, some of those other resources there. So, ultimately, we try to have the students go closest to their home, but based off openings, programming, it's not always possible. So, our fourth challenge actually was talking about, oh, sorry, I didn't address the program goals that we have. So, in terms of a sense of community, we do have a goal that every site will host at least one family in World Midnight. We also are partnering with the bus drivers to educate them about preschoolers, because they also have kind of a learning gap that all of our preschoolers on their bus do have special needs, and many of them being non-verbal or limited in their communication. And we're also partnering in educating our elementaries about our preschool pledge and those PBIS or Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, those expectations that we have, so they can pair it with their building expectations, for example, the YN.WAY. And then our fourth challenge is we've seen a lot of growth and expansion of our specialized learning centers. Again, these are students with more significant needs. We were consistently at 12 sections for three years, and then we jumped to 16 sections, and this year, we have 22 sections of SLCs across our program, of the 79 sections that we have. So, that'll actually pair really well with the school-age presentation, because one of the initiatives that we have is pre-K to 12 on strong, and that is the way that we're trying to build consistency in that programming as we saw such a great growth and trying to get consistency in their instruction and routines. So, before I turn it over to Molly and Stephanie, what questions do you have?
So, if you look at our growth of preschool relative to other districts, Dublin, Hilliard, pick your district, are we an outlier?
Our overall size, we're definitely an outlier. In terms of growth, I would say comparable districts are also seeing growth, not at the rate we are, but relative to our district, I would say we're probably similar. All districts kind of paused, and actually, we, Mr. Meyer might remember, we actually reduced preschool sizes right at that COVID era. Many families decided to decline services or stay home, and so, our enrollment kind of flatlined and even went down, and then, woo, we came back with a vengeance. But we hear it across the region that districts are rapidly growing. This year, we actually started very similar in enrollment as we did last fall, our numbers are almost identical, but I do believe that's because our outlier last year is, I think it was about, I know we had 217, yeah, 215, I apologize, students transitioned to kindergarten last year, but the years before that, it was 163 and 154. So, that difference of about 60 students probably offset our summer growth. So, we monitor, the data points I shared with Michelle, as we monitor August to May growth data, that's actually pretty consistent over the last three years of about 130 students. Our summer enrollment comes from a variety of places, and the move-ins is a big variable, hard to predict. And then, again, now we're really narrowing in on kindergarten transition, and we believe that's why we started about the same size, was because of the kindergarten transition number.
I guess what I was trying to get after is, are we having more pressure in preschool because we provide more services than other districts, and so therefore, like, people are coming here for preschool versus going somewhere else?
I don't know if I could say that specific to preschool. I know as a department, that's often highlighted that people move to Olentangie for special education. I don't know if I could say it's specific to the preschool program. Any other questions?
When you said that you have difficulty recruiting or finding people, is that due to the double qualification, do you think, or what are some of those factors that make it difficult to recruit or retain preschool teachers that we don't see in the elementary level?
Each district provides preschool services different. In our district, we actually contracted out to the ESC of Central Ohio, so that can be a deferent for some candidates. Just a lot of questions and challenges around that. I think also just the seven locations. When I hire people, I tend to not be able to tell them their location or potentially even their program type, because we watch really closely on our projections. The rapport and the relationships that I build just during the interview phase is really crucial, and I feel like we've strategized better in the last year to realize the importance of that in building trust. And then, ultimately, I think the dual license is actually fairly common now, most universities are doing that, but finding people that are really passionate about the preschool age group of age three, four, and five is more challenging. And I would say my administrative team can weed that out in an interview if they're not passionate about preschool. We maybe see that they're not likely going to stay in the program, and so, we may go with a candidate that maybe has more passion or more desire to be with preschool. Great question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time, I'll turn it over to Stephanie and Molly.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Dabberco. Thanks again for having us tonight, it's always great to see you. I'm going to start with some data on this slide. As you kind of digest the numbers, there's a lot of numbers on the screen here, so if you want to kind of digest those, I'll read some highlights. This data is as of November 4th, and I say that because it does literally change daily, mostly with move-in students. And we share this data to just kind of give you a sense of our department's size and scope. It does say grades kindergarten through 14, that's not a typo, so grade 14 students are in our Academy for Community Transition, the ACT program at the Olentangie Academy Building, that's considered one of our specialized learning centers. This data does not include Olentangie electronic school students, that's a term we use to, for students who are placed outside of the district or students who choose a scholarship. So, the data you're seeing on the screen here are students who are actually physically in our buildings. We also have broken down the percentage of students to highlight those who are involved in our specialized learning centers. Jaclyn kind of talked about that, and Molly's going to talk more about the programming that we're doing and training relative to those classrooms, so that's why we chose to break out the data for you that way. We have 260 intervention specialists that serve the 3,043 students who are on IEPs. We are within state ratios, and we do provide exceptional service to foster student growth and provide that specially-designed instruction that's required by the IEP. Molly's going to highlight one of the areas of instruction that we talked about before, but we're going to highlight again is our literacy, specialized literacy instruction that we provide students. We also have an ever-growing student population who are on 504 plans. A student on a 504 plan has a need for accommodations because they do have a disability or a physical or mental impairment, is the way the law reads, but they don't need specialized instruction or teaching, they just need accommodations. To support those students, we have designated 504 case managers. These are still licensed intervention specialists in most cases, but they serve in a role to coordinate the 504 plans. We have two per high school and one per middle school, as well as school nurses across the district who specifically support students with medical needs who have a 504 accommodation plan. We're very proud of the unique and specialized support staff roles. Jaclyn talked about these roles as well, they do go from preschool up through 12th or grade 14, and you can see the various titles there. As part of our presentation tonight, we're going to highlight a few roles in a minute. I'm going to specifically highlight the role of the behavior specialist, so kind of just picking one out of that group there. On the next slide here, again, just another, oh, sorry, yep.
The 7.2%, how should we think about that on absolute terms? Is that growing, shrinking? And in relative terms, how does that compare to other districts?
All of these numbers are growing, for sure. That 7.2%, that's the 504 plans, so 7.2% of our district student population is on a 504 plan, is what that's telling us. Similarly, the IEP stat rate is the 12.8% of our district total population is on an IEP. Those are, those are within norm, normal ranges, you know, comparatively to districts, but because of our increase in size, right, we see growth in those areas.
7.2% is a percent of the population, so if the population grows, 7% should stay the same, right?
Correct, yeah.
Would the 5% last year, expected to be 9, is, what's the percent?
The eligibility for a 504 plan is very broad in terms of, like I said, that a student who has an impairment is eligible for a 504 plan, so that, that number has trended upwards.
So, if you looked at this last year, is it 7.2 higher or lower than last year?
I believe it is higher, it is growing. Yeah.
Why? Why do we think it's growing?
Because of that interpretation of the impairment and students with, it could be a student who wears glasses, right? Could be a student who uses a wheelchair to accommodations. They gave up on our lengthy presentations. Let me know if you need more information, I can maybe get you more data or more content if you need it. Okay, quick data on this slide here, there's, there's two things here, there's actually special education rating, which is the meets requirements. It's not a very flashy title of a rating, but that's what the state gives us when we're doing a great job, they say you meet requirements. It also means you don't have any corrective action that you need to take, so that is good. That rating was just released a couple of weeks ago, I think, October 24th. The right side is a lot of text that talks about the special education rating. On the screen below that meets requirements, there's three bullet points that specifically talk about the state report card data, and I know Jeanette Kenny was here, I think, this fall, talking to you about the state report card, the data that we pulled out here is relative to students with disabilities, just like Eric talked about his data relative to English learners. You could see the exceeded performance index for students with disabilities in both English Language Arts and Math, exceeded expected growth in math, and exceeded the graduation rate. Okay. All right, I think I've got, sorry, back, one more slide, and then Molly's going to hop up here. Like I said before, I was going to highlight just one role, one unique role that we have on our team, it's a behavior specialist. We employed, as a district, we employed our first and only behavior specialist in the school year 1920. Since then, we have, we have been strategically adding to that team, it's been a priority of ours. This year, this school year, we now have eight behavior specialists on staff. You can see, there's a stat there about the active student cases, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But a behavior specialist is a staff member who has, they have highly specialized training, they actually have a credential above their teaching license, it's a, it's called Board Certified Behavior Analyst, BCBA, is the acronym for that. So, all of these individuals in this role have that highly specialized training credential. The behavior team's mission is to provide staff and students with skills and strategies to promote positive behavior, self-regulation, and self-advocacy. The active student cases you see here are most often students on IEPs who have very significant behavioral, emotional, or regulation challenges. These staff members support our school teams with conducting what's called a functional behavior assessment. That's a process that helps to identify the reason behind a student's behavior in order to hopefully effectively intervene. So, they help, help with those assessments, they also help school staff and teams write what's called a behavior intervention plan. Both of those are required processes within special education. These staff members are also, also are district trainers for CPI, which is the Crisis Prevention Institute Training, so staff are trained in de-escalation strategies and techniques. Recently, a survey, sorry, struggling with the mic, the survey was sent to all principals, building principals, to collect some data regarding the role and ongoing need of behavior specialists. So, you can see on the screen, very positive survey responses from principals about how behavior specialist support students and staff in areas such as collaboration, problem-solving, professional development, data analysis, so on and so forth. And just in addition to that, there were some survey comments that I want to highlight. Principals say things like, when you have a student with such challenging needs, you know, it's all hands-on deck, heavy support is needed, and these specialists help lead the team in problem-solving. The specialists are very collaborative, hands-on, and solution-focused, that was a comment from a principal. Overall, the behavior specialists are very valuable and beneficial, and another comment was, we absolutely need them and we want more. So, they're really, have become a crucial team member in special education.
Do they serve, do they serve all grade levels?
They do, yes.
So, if I remember correctly, so of these surveys, what was their response rate of the surveys distributed?
I would have to get that to you, it was sent to all principals, I can get you how many responded.
So, this was the principals, not necessarily the students?
No, this was building administrators, correct.
So, is there like a self-fulfilling issue with the survey? Like, if I'm a principal-
Sure.
How am I not going to say yes?
I think we're, we're just trying to highlight the, we have students with a lot of needs, and these particular individuals bring a wealth of knowledge to help problem-solve students with very complex needs, and that's a, that's a real need that we, you know, a need that we see.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to transition to Molly.
All right, good evening, everyone. The People's Services Department advocated for four intervention specialist coordinator roles for the 2023-2024 school year. We often refer to them as coaches. The work of these coordinators continues to focus on special education management, student-focused needs, and curriculum and instruction. You can see this slide, the building support statistics that we highlighted tonight. Some of those statistics include supporting 29 new intervention specialists that we hired this school year. In addition, we continue to support our veteran ISs. This year in particular, we're looking at 20 additional intervention specialists, and that is an ongoing number. One of the areas I want to highlight tonight with our intervention specialist coordinators is the work they're doing to provide special, professional development to our intervention staff. Some of the areas that they're supporting this year include co-teaching initiatives, our STRONG initiative, which I'll talk about on the next slide, and additional IEP training One area of professional development I'm going to go into deeper tonight is our Olentangie STRONG programming. STRONG, new this year, stands for Structured Teaching Routines for Olentangie Neurodiverse Groups. The STRONG training initiative provides our SLC, which is our Specialized Learning Centers, intervention specialists with comprehensive model of strategies and teaching approaches in their classroom. The training also helps building administrators to continually support the needs of our specialized learning centers. The picture highlighted tonight is just the first day of training that we provided to Our STRONG training is built on foundations such as student schedules, physical classroom structures, work systems, and the other areas listed on this slide tonight. With each foundation listed, we're providing strategic training and supports to our specialized learning center classrooms. In turn, this is leading to structured, a structured environment that not only supports the students, but it supports our staff as well. In the implementation of- In the implementation of this program, we developed goals for the school year. For this school year, we have trained or started our training for 19 preschool intervention specialists, 20 of our elementary intervention specialists, and 20 of our secondary intervention specialists. All of these intervention specialist positions are our specialized learning center positions. This number accounts for one SLC intervention specialist at each building within our district. They are provided with in-depth training and experiences and continuous support from the district, strong team leaders. In future years, we plan to provide the additional training to staff and continue to provide structures and supports to our staff and students. The next area I want to highlight tonight is our structured literacy certification levels. As you know, Olentangie houses a structured literacy certification program through the Olentangie Orton-Gillingham Academy, which is the only one accredited in the nation so far. This chart identifies the levels of certification as well as the training requirements that our staff has to undergo. I want to highlight specifically, as you can see in this chart, the number of Olentangie staff members, specifically intervention specialists, who received a level of certification through the Orton-Gillingham Academy when we compare this to numbers in Ohio. For example, at the associate level, which is the minimum training level we require for our new intervention specialist hired in the district, we currently have 34 staff members who have fully become certified at the associate level. In the state of Ohio, there are a total of 122 teachers or outside of teaching who are certified. We currently have one who is certified at the certified level through the Orton-Gillingham Academy. There are only seven in the state. We also have five fellows in training out of the 10 in the state of Ohio who are certified.
So all of these numbers are inclusive of us?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We house a large portion in the state of Ohio of people who are certified through the Orton-Gillingham Academy that can provide this specialized training to our students and staff. Finally, in the area of structured literacy, I would like to highlight the following. We currently have 49 intervention specialists who are undergoing our structured literacy practicum process. We have 63 intervention specialists who are finalizing and writing their applications so that they can submit for a level of certification, specifically at the associate and certified levels. And finally, throughout this school year, we will conduct 333 observations and coaching sessions that are utilized to support our structured literacy practicums. We are very proud as a department for the work we're doing in these areas. I'd like to close tonight with thanking you for your time and asking if you have any questions.
I just have one. I was in... Can you go back to the structured literacy slide?
Yeah.
So I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago and talking about another district, Orton-Gillingham. And I asked them, "Why isn't it done in this district?" And they said, "Well, this district's too big." And I said, "Well, they do it in Olentangie." So how do we get it done? Is it magic? Or what... Because you look at those numbers, there's bazillions of kids in Ohio, and we've monopolized a really important area of this work. How do we get it done with such a huge student population and teaching population?
Yeah. So I'm going back to this chart to highlight our fellow, which is Holly Roberts, who somewhat oversees our dyslexia programming. In addition, we have five fellows in training. That is in addition for us this school year. We had two last year, so we're up to five. So with that being said, the work that we're doing in the People's Services Department alongside of our fellow that's required as part of this accreditation process and our fellows in training is how we're able to continue to offer these supports, not only to our staff, but to our students, which in turn, we end up with those higher numbers of those who are certified in Olentangie versus the state of Ohio.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, my quick, which danger, English major doing math, but like my quick back of the neck math is that's 30% of the state.
It is, correct, yeah.
So, I mean, just that's... That's great. I mean, that's a lot, right? So, I mean, just thinking about that relative to our staff levels. If you had, you know, all of the money in the world, how many do you think that you would actually need to do this? Like, are these people still, you know, there's still not enough of them? Like, how do you sort of perceive that number, given that it's just so much higher than anything else in the state?
Yeah, so specific to Olentangie, we still require what's called an OG tutor position or a structured literacy tutor position to fill some of the roles for the needs of the students. So the specialized reading instruction that we're providing within the district is instrumental to student growth, which in turn requires a lot of additional support to provide such a structured reading program. In addition, so our ISs that are certified in these areas, they're also providing services in the areas of reading comprehension and math, writing, executive functioning, behavior support. So this is one facet of what they do on a day-to-day basis. And there is a need and a continual growing need for additional support in this area to meet all of the needs of our students.
Questions?
Other questions tonight?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Meyer.
All right, good evening. Thank you. I do want to thank the People's Services team for the presentation and for sure that the work that they do along with their wonderful staff across the district, serving our students with disabilities. And also, Mrs. Roscoe, I had the pleasure to read to the preschool classrooms over at Shell Meadows today, Pete the cat. And they were very, very engaging and had a fun time with preschoolers today. One thing, as we wind down the fall sports season, just highlighting some of the athletic accomplishments. So here, we're recognizing the cross-country teams from Orange High School, Liberty High School, and Berlin High School. And you can see placers there from our cross-country teams. Also want to recognize, we still have three of our football teams in the state playoffs, which will all play tomorrow. Liberty's at home, Orange is at home, and then Berlin, I believe, is away. And then we still have Berlin High School volleyball, the girls' volleyball, in the state semifinal game against Cleveland Saint Joseph Academy tomorrow. So great success with athletics this fall and proud of the accomplishments of our student athletes. I'd like to highlight, this is a program. So on October 18th, high school student athletes from Olentangie in Dublin joined and participated in what's called Coach Beyond Student-Athlete Life and Leadership Conference. So that was sponsored by the Ohio State University. So you can see there, students had the opportunity to network and learn about topics including leadership, mental health, and positive team culture, which is extremely important in our athletics programs. Want to highlight Veterans Day. Obviously, Veterans Day is coming up, but again, in our community, across our schools, do a lot of really great work honoring and celebrating veterans. So this is just one example. Orange Middle School, they held their annual breakfast celebrating veterans on Friday, November 1st, and welcomed many veterans to speak in their social studies classes. But what's really just awesome to showcase... So this year, they raised over $6,600 to support local veteran organizations. So Honor Flight, Save a Warrior, and Mission Gratitude Family Friends. So I think they divvied that up equally between the three organizations there at a little over $2,200 each. And then throughout tomorrow and then throughout next week, all of our schools will be honoring veterans with various programs across the district. And they left the AP.
There's still someone back there.
Yes!
No? Okay. But anyways, wanted to highlight again.
Our guy.
So on Tuesday, this past Tuesday was Election Day. And so Berlin High School AP government students and Mr. Laflomme's class volunteered at polling locations across the district. And they've been here, I think, at least three or four meetings. So they're staying engaged with what's going on here at the district level with the board. And then also, the Orange High School, the Juice Broadcast students covered the election from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. So it looks like they got to go to sleep on Tuesday evening. So with on-the-hour poll updates. So again, opportunities for students to engage in that process. Just want to highlight a couple stakeholder groups. So this past Monday, we held our first key communicators meeting of the year, where district leadership team updated our key communicators on things that are happening in the district and armed them with talking points as they go out and have conversations with community members. And then Mr. Jenkins and I met with the Genoa Township Business Association this past Wednesday at the Genoa Township Town Hall. So again, great discussion to highlight what's going on in the district. And we talked really about three priorities. Student achievement, resource stewardship, and enrollment management, which they had some really, really good questions. And actually, the advice was to continue to do that on the road around the community, just to continue to educate and bring awareness to, again, some of the challenges we're facing as a district, and also to highlight and showcase the wonderful things that are happening across the district. And I just want to mention, like, so enrollment growth. So just since the beginning of the year, we have already grown by 153 students in two months. And that's one thing that's just constant in Olentangie. We continue to grow every week here as families continue to move into the district. So already, again, just in two months, we've grown by 153 students in the district. Also want to highlight, this just came out. So all four of our high schools, all four of our high schools were named to the 2024 AP School Honor Roll. And as we report out many, many times, we have a large percentage of our students who take advantage of our very robust AP program. So you can see the stats from the four high schools, and three were gold and one was silver. And it really has to do with, number one, the percentage of students taking advantage of college-level coursework at the AP level, and then the percent of students who score three or higher on at least one AP exam. And again, extremely proud of the program, and we have many, many students in our high schools who take advantage of our AP program. So all four schools were recognized this past week. Superintendent Action Items, pretty standard. But I do want to highlight Elaine Humes from Olentangie High School. Very, very, very accomplished math teacher at Olentangie High School. So we're going to be sorry to see her leave, but she's going to enjoy retirement. She's been in the district 30 years. So want to wish her well as she begins the next chapter of her life after this school year in retirement. We have one student recommended for early graduation. And then we have some student overnight and out-of-state field trips I'm recommending for approval. And then recommending declaring transportation as impractical for students on this board agenda. Coming up, Classified Interview Day, again. Typically, we have Classified Interview Day once a month. So that'll be Tuesday, November 19th. Also want to highlight the Signs of Suicide Virtual Parent Program. And this is important, too, because, again, as we continue to create awareness around mental health and the challenges that, you know, some of our students or families are facing, it's important for us to continue to educate and bring awareness. So we're having that on Wednesday, November 20th at 7:00 p.m. And again, this will help educate and bring awareness on recognizing warning signs in themselves, their friends, and to learn how to act as a friend or a family member. And then, of course, we have Thanksgiving break coming up, starting Wednesday, November 27th, Professional Development Day, right after, the week after, on Monday, December 2nd. And then next Board of Education meeting will be in a few weeks, December 12th, right here. Any questions?
Mr. Meyer, are AP classes required by the state to be offered in a school district?
No, no. And we offer, what's the number, 27, 28? It's up there, high 20s.
But that's just number of classes, like sections of that would be in the hundreds?
Yeah, yeah, way, yeah, way, yeah, hundred, yeah, way more. That's just the course. So we have multiple sections in each of our high schools.
I do really want to encourage the community to take advantage of the Virtual Parent Program.
Yeah.
I think sometimes with mental health, you know, people think it's only about suicide awareness, right? It's not just only about suicide awareness. But that's a very, very, very important part of it.
Sure.
Especially with the stresses people have. And we do a really good job of presenting these things to the community. So I just encourage people to do that, to become aware.
Yeah, and we put a paragraph, a section in our community newsletter that went out today about that as well.
Great, all right, thank you. Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening, board members. I've been chided to be parsimonious with my words tonight, so let's proceed. You're being asked to pass a bond retirement resolution that will reduce our millage. The resolution is asking our county auditor to reduce the millage by a quarter of a mil. And this is going to better align our collections with what we think debt service is going to be. And it's another example of how as a district, we will only collect what we need. If you put together what we've done over the last two tax years, so the '23 pay '24, and then we're preparing for the '24 pay '25, we've actually cut tax rates by a mil and a half. On the left of this chart, you'll see what will happen for '24 pay '25 on a quarter of a mil. But then if you look to the right, if you look at our tax rates for 2023 and then 2024, they're down a full mil and a half. So if you look at the normal value of a home in our district, it's in that sweet spot between $4 and $700,000. So about $184, up to a $320 reduction in taxes from what they otherwise would have been had these rates not been reduced. Any questions about that, board members?
So, well, I probably have a couple, I imagine. But first of all, this is a resolution that we are passing. We don't have to pass this, right?
That's correct.
So I want to highlight that this is proactive work that we've done through your office, working with the auditor, to, one, look at, you know, the right levels, but do it with very focused on the mindset that we don't want to take more from the community than we need to. And being very sensitive to the, you know, the high cost of living here, even with people having, as we heard from the survey, a very high satisfaction. There are high costs. We want to make sure that we are keeping those costs as low as possible. But that is us working proactively with them. It's not just it automatically happens.
That's exactly right.
You might get to this at some point, but I just wanted... Because some people might be seeing this and thinking, "Well, if you can cut our taxes, then why did you come and ask us for more taxes?" Like, what can... And I don't know, again, if that's part of your presentation later on, but maybe if you can explain a little bit about the why and, you know, how certain things are earmarked for things that we can use them for and what we can't.
That's an excellent question. Very similar to in your home, over time, as you pay your mortgage off. Imagine that you didn't necessarily have a level amortization schedule. Most people, when they have, you know, a mortgage, they're going to pay the same amount for 360 months, obviously a 30-year time period. Our debt is structured such that our amortization schedule is variable. And as we pay more debt off, what we need to collect to pay off the residual is less and less. But you can't collect it for debt service purposes, find out you don't need it, and then do something else with it. So the point you make, Ms. Schreiber, is well said, that... So the point you make, Ms. Schreiber, is well said, that all we can do with this portion of our tax dollars from what we collect from our community is pay debt. As we continue to pay off more debt over time, if we continue to collect the same amount, we would be over-collecting. So we match what our needs are to pay debt service to what we need to collect. And we couldn't, as I mentioned, go ahead and collect this anyway just to offset other needs that we have, like building and operations. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So what all have we done as a district just in the last four years to be sure that we're as efficient as we can be with our taxpayer dollars? You know, we want to be good stewards, and so we have this one out in the community newsletter a couple of weeks ago. I believe pieces of this may also be referenced in our website and other places, but we've saved a cumulative total of almost $32 million just since 2020, either saved or not spent because of moves like what we just talked about on the previous slide. And that actually isn't even up there, the amount of taxes that we'll not collect. But we've done things like refund debt, design and efficiency savings when it comes to school construction and energy, insurance premium holidays, being self-insured for workers' compensation. We are always doing everything we can to maximize what is spent in the classroom. And a lot of these areas aren't necessarily directly in the classroom. And so how does that portend to what we do as a district? And we've got a sneak peek at CUP data here. ODEW releases something called the Expanded Report, and I took the Expanded Report, and I know that what CUP ultimately does is take the expenditure data, and it divides it by the funded enrollment instead of the headcount enrollment, so I've done that. We've ordered this from highest to lowest in terms of performance index. So in our cohort of schools that we kind of compare ourselves to in different venues, Hudson City is the highest performing when it comes to a 106.906 performance index. You can see that we're doing, we're doing very well at 103.077. But I've also pulled in two more key statistics. We're looking at what we'll be spending per pupil when CUP is released, and we're also looking at, based on what we spend, how much of each dollar is spent in CRI, stands for Classroom Instructional Percentage. At 74.6%, we're the ninth highest when it comes to the proportion of what we spend in the classroom out of all K-12 public districts. Now, it just so happens that a couple of them are on this board ahead of us. Hilliard City is ahead of us, but we're obviously performing better than they are when it comes to Performance Index. You can look right above us, Mason City. They are spending a little bit less than us, but we have a higher share of Classroom Instructional Percentage. Right below us, Upper Arlington, they're doing a little bit better on spending it in the classroom, but they're spending more per pupil, and their performance isn't as high. So this was something that we showed a lot of our community members when Mr. Meyer and I were out speaking with the community, that the two key statistics that we try to look at is, well, technically, three. What are we spending per pupil? How is it being spent proportionately compared to, and not to knock them, but if you look at when districts get as big as we are, or as big as Columbus is, to only have 60%, 61% of what they spend going into the classroom is a position that we just don't ever want to get in by adding administrative layers and other types of overhead.
Again, caveats with my back of the napkin math, but if we look at Hudson City, they're spending about $2,600 more per student than we are. If you multiply that by 24,000 students, that's $62.4 million more a year than our budget would look like if we spent what they did.
That's correct. That's correct. As a district, to have 24,000 students and to be a five-star district and to essentially crank out 1,800 to 2,000 highly skilled, publicly educated students year over year is a tremendous feat that this district accomplishes.
See, the way I was thinking about it is more like your cost per pupil and your performance index is, what am I paying and what am I getting for it?
Correct.
Right, which is a little bit different than the CRI. I mean, I get it, but if I'm Columbus City and I'm paying 25 grand, I get a 57 on my performance index.
Yes. The three are paired up. The reason I picked them is if you go to ODEW's website, these are the three statistics that they really try to promote when they analyze how schools perform. If you look at the rankings, if you go to the report card data section, these, now, the other thing that could happen, just kind of a fair warning, ODEW also has something called the Expenditure Per Equivalent Pupil. This is just raw expenditure per pupil. Now, what do I mean by expenditure per equivalent pupil? The more pupils that you educate as a total proportion of your students that ultimately need more resources to educate effectively, for example, EL students, special ed students, those students are weighted. If you look at our expenditure per equivalent pupil, that 16 grand technically falls to somewhere around, I want to say, 11,000 or 12,000. And that becomes one of the best expenditure per equivalent pupil statistics across the state because of, when you look at what we're doing, that 16,019.49 per pupil would just be if every learner was exactly the same across the board.
And if I recall, I looked at these numbers back around the levy, so I'm not sure that these, these may not match up with those, but I think the 103 put us like in the top 30 school districts, give or take.
Still are.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Same.
Right? And the ones that were above us are not even remotely close. And like Mason, I think is around 10,000 students, give or take.
Correct.
But like New Albany, a couple thousand, Hudson, a couple, I mean, these are much smaller school districts.
Exactly right.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to add, too, I don't think any district up there is growing like we are. And, you know, Mr. O'Brien brings up a good point, the value that our students and our families get with the education in Olentangie, you know, obviously, in my opinion, is unmatched. And the resources that we're able to provide, so from the pupil services presentation and all of the things that we do in that department with our EL students, with electives and opportunities that we provide students pre-K-12, pre-K-12 plus. I forgot to say, another one of my best, and I'll just, can I stick this in real quick? But the ACT program, they learn life skills over there, so they have a program where they have a coffee cart and they sell coffee. They make the coffee, they sell the coffee, and then obviously, they come around the district. But here at OAO, so Zach is one of my favorite students, who brings my coffee every Wednesday. I pay for it, but anyways. To my point is just the tremendous opportunities that we provide for kids in the district. And we talk about that all the time, as far as our achievement level, and it's just like Mr. Jenkins said, what we do year over year over year over year with the growth that we have, meeting the needs of our students and the opportunities we provide, and the tremendous staff that we have in the district, that's why we get these results.
And you're leaving it only slightly unsaid, so let me put an exclamation point on it. The fact that we're able to do that and we're spending, you know, we're not spending that extra $62 million that it would cost us if we spent what Hudson, that's not an accident, right? That's intentional attention to detail.
Absolutely.
And so when we were going around, you know, doing some of these presentations this spring, we would get questions of, all right, well, what are you doing for the community? Recognizing that, you know, people, that property taxes are rising, to be sure, right? This is, this is a big part of what we're doing. We could justify, we could go around and say, we need all these other things to keep up with the Joneses, right?
Sure.
But this is an intentional approach to try to keep those costs low and still get the value, and it's working.
Absolutely. So educational excellence at an exceptional value, and we, every community group we're in front of, Mr. Jenkins and I talk about that and emphasize that. Because at the end of the day, all of our students are graduating from high school, and we want to prepare them for the next chapter in their life, so work, military, college, and they're doing extremely well after graduation as well. And you bring up the intentionality as far as the focus and the laser focus in this district and the alignment that we have in the district. Again, it's unbelievable, the work that goes on each and every day.
So take this analysis one more step, because we're living in an age where public dollars are paying for private education. At the beginning of the school year, end of August, August 25th, the old Cleveland Plain Dealer, Cleveland.com, published a study of how our Olentangie kids compare academically when they leave our district and go to private schools. And in every category, we outperform their private school experience. And that's a big deal for the comparison because you're holding everything else constant, you're holding, the kids are the same. It's also important to note, in the context of pupil services, up to a third of those schools that are accepting public money are students, they're not taking any of the kids you worked with, any of them. So we're still outperforming, and that's because of the program that you've set up and your team has put together, and it's a big deal. And then throw in the fact that we're doing it for less. Got a pretty good district here.
And I just want to emphasize one other thing, because I forgot to talk about, but our quality profile will be hitting community resident mailboxes, I believe, next, starting next week. And we have a section in there that speaks to student experience, because, again, it's so important and so critical, and that's why we're here, but we really highlight the student experience throughout the district, so it's a page in the quality profile, but really well done.
So the other mood I'm in this week is to talk a little bit about advocacy. You know, tonight, the five-year forecast is on the agenda. We talked back in October about some of the constraints that the funding formula, which is happy as we are about where we are with the funding formula versus where we used to be. We've been out a couple of places, and the question came up, what could we tell our legislators? What's going on with the funding formula? And how can we continue to work to make sure that our district gets the state dollars that we deserve? And so what I'll, what I'll do quickly is, I'll go back to this slide, remember, about $16,000 per pupil. That's roughly, you know, what you could say we're spending per kid. But what we're finding with the state funding formula is that two or three key pieces are keeping the funding formula from being able to keep pace. And so constructively, we want to talk to our legislators about doing at least three things with this funding formula. First thing is, remember, we're spending, as I said, about 16 grand per pupil. We need the cost inputs that create the base cost to keep up. I believe right now, the statewide average base cost per pupil is around $8,800 per pupil. So the state funding formula starts with a basic assumption that schools are spending as a part of base cost about $8,800 per pupil. Well, we just saw on the previous slide that that's nowhere near what schools are really spending. Now, understandably, the legislature has to go about tackling this pieces at a time and couldn't probably stay solvent if overnight they tried to double the inputs. But we know when the formula was written, they were looking at 18 costs. Now we're looking at 2022 costs. We need to ask our legislators, you have to continue to move costs forward. At a minimum, I would hope that the biennial budget for fiscal year '26 and '27 looks at 2024. I would really love it if they began to just simply say, move it forward to 2024, and it has to escalate 5% or 6% each year. So if we can ask our legislators, the base cost has to keep up. It simply has to keep up in order for the formula to continue to fund the way it's supposed to. Number two, we need them to fully fund it. Right now, we're getting about 2/3 of the difference between what we should get and the base year of 2020. Next year, we're supposed to get 5/6ths, or 83%, and the year after that, we're supposed to get it all. Now, I say we're supposed to because it's not formally in the current law. The funding formula is, but we need to continue to ask our legislators, fund the formula fully by the time we get to the 2026, '27 school year. And then the last one is the biggest one for Olentangie. We're growing like crazy. The formula looks at and recognizes valuation growth and assumes a type of, using a word from a long time ago, phantom revenue. If you look at how the district grows in valuation and how it grows in the incomes of its residents, the local capacity shifts dramatically towards the Olentangie School District community, and the formula says you need to come up with a larger percentage of the base cost. And in fact, you guys saw when we did this presentation a month ago, we are being driven to the 10% threshold, meaning, within a year, we will get only 10% of the base cost, which was forecasted to be somewhere around $805 to $806 per student. I believe that we have a very compelling story to tell, that that threshold should go to 20%. Potentially, we could even talk about the fact that though most public schools in the state of Ohio aren't growing, we are. So we want to talk to our legislators about these three points, but probably one of the biggest points is, one and two could work in our favor, but three is probably one of the biggest components, is we have to have our legislators consider the fact that giving more than just 10% of the base cost to districts that are considered to be ostensibly wealthy enough to hold their own is something that we'd like them to consider, given the rate at which we grow.
Just a, just a quick question of clarification, though. You were out last board meeting, a couple well-deserved days. We were able to welcome in our state legislator. You received an award for transparency and general awesomeness, and while you were gone, have you caught up on the emails? Is there anything in there that said they're going to do that already? Because we failed levy, and we were told that the state would adjust. Has there, you have messages that you've missed, emails maybe, while you were out?
No. Obviously, everyone will remember at the time, we answered that question with, if we do not pass our levy, there's absolutely nothing that the state does for us or any other school to say will give you the difference in funding, so no.
They may have come by Al or Raven or something. We should check those, too.
Yeah, your MySpace account.
So questions about this? Okay. So tonight's items, a couple of my items this evening are more not on a consent calendar. I'm asking you to just simply take them one by one. It's the resolution for the millage reduction, and I believe that the other item slipped in mind, it might be the five-year forecast. But the other more routine items are minutes from October 24th, acceptance of the donations as noted, and then, as you know, the last two items, the five-year forecast. No changes, by the way, from October. I didn't pour into it or dive into that. It's exactly the same as the first read back in October. Questions?
All right.
And I have no public participation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Whoops. Sorry, Dusty.
So we will then move into the treasure consent action items. I'll give you a second to resituate.
So Board members, this evening, as normal, the following items are being presented to be approved by one single motion and vote, unless the Board would like to take one of these items and pull them out and discuss them separately. Item A would be the approval of the minutes from October 24th. Item B would be the approval of the donations that are noted. Item B would be the approval of the donations that are noted in the detail of the agenda. And again, C would be to consider this all by one motion and action item, unless the Board wants to talk about anything separately.
Anyone like to discuss any of these separately? I would just note, Mr. Jenkins, that the first one reads, "Meeting Min 2s," so we may want to fix that.
Maybe that's one of his fancy words he uses.
That's not a word.
Min 2A. All right. Will I, I'll entertain a motion to approve these together as a consent action item?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Daverco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, and then, Mr. Jenkins, the five-year forecast.
Yeah, so, item A?
Are the other two.
Is the five-year forecast. Yep.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the five-year forecast.
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Daverco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, and now, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Daverco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, and then, Mr. Meyer, the superintendent consent action items.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lester. Board members, I recommend approval of the following superintendent consent action items, A through G. A, specific human resource items certified. B, specific human resource items supplementals. C, specific human resource items classified. D, specific human resource classified substitutes. E, approval of student for early graduation. F, recommend approval of student overnight and out-of-state field trips. And then, G, approval of business management facility items, which is just one that students as impractical for transportation.
All right. So, does anyone wish to take any of those items separately? All right, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
And a second? I will second it. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Daverco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, and now, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Daverco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned.